All right, we welcome everybody here to our work session here today.
Yeah, we just want to give an overview of kind of where we're at with our strategic plan number four. Obviously, we started work at the Northfield site and now we're taking a look at work at the Southwood site. And so I asked Barton Coe and Wygand to kind of share details of where we're kind of at at this point in time to give the board and community information on those projects. So we'll start with Brian Boelander from Barton Coe Villamont.
Thank you, Dr. Coon, thank you, board. We've got a slideshow here, so we are just moving out of what we call schematic design phase, moving into design development phase. That includes the layer that Wygand will present in terms of logistics and phasing. And I'll just give a high-level overview of the design elements in each building. So the plan here is Southwood Elementary School on the screen. That's color-coded, kind of three ways. Yellow are some renovations that occur throughout the building. Those are mostly heating and cooling and finishes throughout the spaces. Green areas are more major renovations. Those would include reconfiguring some elements within those areas. And then blue is a proposed building addition or potential building addition to the west side of the building. On the next slide, these get labeled for that, just to get you kind of oriented. So you're kind of working from top to bottom, the yellow being those finished renovations. The first green area that we encounter at the far north end of the building is a little, a small reconfiguration for the RISE program that's expanding from its current space into that larger space across the hallway. That renovates and creates a restroom and a quiet or cool-down room for them within that classroom. As we work south from there, the two rooms that you see kind of side by side with the red dots in them, those would be on the left robotic space, on the right a STEM or STEAM classroom. Those are created from the locker rooms and the stage area within the existing building. And that also relocates then the gym office in the smaller rooms between the gym and those robotics classrooms. The gymnasium, which is currently about half the size that you see here, is expanded into the current dining space that's south of the gym. So now the gym floor takes up that entire area. It is almost a regulation-sized physical basketball floor in there, although it would have a synthetic, a thinner synthetic surface because we're replacing a very thin resilient floor throughout that area to install that new flooring. Whereas a high school floor would normally have a much thicker cross-section to it. That's all facilitated then by that addition that I referred to earlier in blue. So that new addition would house, by the time the project is completed, would be new dining space, new serving space for the kitchen because of flipping the orientation of where the dining is relative to the kitchen. A new dish room, some storage space. Then by the time you get to the south end of the blue, there is a new staff dining area as well as access to restrooms and a conference space that do not exist in the building currently between the dining space and large gymnasium. To the east of the gym, there are renovations to the existing restrooms, so primarily to pull the student sinks from within the restroom area out to the hallway so that they can be better supervised, especially for the younger grade levels there. And it also renovates the staff restrooms that are just to the west of the student restrooms to make those ADA compliant and as a result, larger than they currently are. And then the last note on the page, the secure entrance renovations. So whereas now you walk all the way into the lobby area of the building before you then turn to enter the office and be checked in, you would now be restricted to access only to within that vestibule area before you have to enter the office to get checked into the software system that they have. And then you have access to the remainder of the building. Along with that security improvement, we are also budgeting to replace all of the classroom door hardware, to modernize that, and it would match the other door hardware that's happening in the other additions and renovations projects for our classroom security function. So that improvement happens throughout the building as well. The next slide, this zooms in a little bit to the gym and the classroom addition area to point out, and Wygand will speak to this in a little more detail in terms of timing. But one advantage that we have in constructing the new dining space to the west is that it gives us an opportunity to use that same square footage as temporary classrooms during the renovation portion of the project. One of the aspects of this building is that there is no spare space to use to move kids around through construction. And the amount of construction and renovation occurring is going to span more than a school year. So this will allow us to move students and out of temporary classroom spaces during the renovation phases and do that in a very strategic way. And then at the end of the project, as the next slide would show, that gets converted to that dining space along with those other renovations that occur around it. So that's a little more detailed view of those other areas that I already described. Any questions about the floor plan, what we're trying to accomplish in the building? On the next slide, you can see the overall site. So that new addition is in red, that dining addition to the west of the building. There's some associated site renovations that happen around that dining addition. So you see a large circle to the northwest of that dining addition. That's to accommodate truck traffic in particular that delivers to the existing kitchen receiving area. So that receiving location is not changing. That same drive gives the building some potential flexibility in terms of how you maybe stage vehicles and traffic for different events and times of day on the site with creating kind of a large loop to the northwest. In addition to that, and because all of that displaces some existing parking to the west, and just because of existing needs, even without that addition, we are showing adding a new or expanded parking area to the south of the building along with its own drive. So you now get kind of nose-to-nose parking all along that south strip. And again, we afford some flexibility in terms of how traffic is routed on the site, but still maintaining the two drives, you know, through the county highway there. There's other utility work associated with that that's still, as we move out of this schematic design phase into design development, we're adding more detail to that as we make that progress. Any questions about the Southwood site?
That additional part is like, that's got eliminated those trees, right?
Yes. I'm not sure if there's any that are saved on the ends, there could be some replanted. It also moves to the monument signs that's at the building, that's money budgeted to relocate that as well.
There was concern, Brian, about that mislabeling of the flood. That's not an issue.
We are waiting to hear back from Indiana Department of Natural Resources. They are the first kind of stop in terms of having a flood map updated. If the board's not aware of that, this site is considered by Indiana DNR and IDN, who reviews that at the federal level, getting their information from the state. This site is in an assumed flood plain right now, meaning that there's been no, they call it base flood elevation established for the property. So we have asked Department of Natural Resources to establish that. And depending on their determination, they affect what we can and can't do in terms of the scope of the project. Don't have their deadline in front of my mind right now. But a couple of weeks ago, it was officially in their system to set that. And I think they gave themselves a deadline of 90 days to review and set that. So based on what we've heard anecdotally about the site in terms of flood activity, we're optimistic that we would set that at a point where it wouldn't interfere with the project. But it's in their simulation's hands and whatever calculations they do to set that marker. So we're optimistic, continuing to design, assuming that we'll have a favorable outcome for that. Any other Southwood Elementary School questions? All right, this next slide shows the scope at the high school. It's quite a bit different than what you have at the Northfield property and I think has developed quite a bit since we saw the board previously. So again, what I would call kind of minor renovations are still in yellow. The additions are in blue on the next slide, if you're kind of oriented with that. It is similar in the sense that we have additional physical education and athletic space added on to the north of the building. However, this gymnasium is oriented east-west because of the existing road. And you'll see that a little bit more later on the site plan. It has a similar lobby and entrance space that connects to the main gym, some storage space, restrooms, potentially wrestling room and those three courts and track in that northern addition. One thing that we eliminated recently from this scope was a second concession room in that lobby. Because of this project being a little bit different than the Northfield additions and renovations, we can maintain the existing concession space and not have to invest money in that second concession space to the north. And that allows us to recoup a little more storage space in that north addition, which is already space that's used, so that works out well. While we're on athletics, I'll skip around a little bit to the east gym. We are budgeting for, at this point in the process, making renovations. And the east gym will be similar to the renovations being made in Northfield East Gym. So it would get comparable renovations as the other project there. And then I guess the biggest departure from the Northfield project in the case of this building, we want to recoup all of the career and technical education spaces. So we have a CTE room extending off of the west hallway. Those are somewhat displaced by the, or they are displaced by the fieldhouse and where it makes sense for that fieldhouse gymnasium addition to go. They do have a fairly natural fit onto the west end of the building and it's an opportunity to modernize those for how the programs are used today. So that includes an ag lab to the northwest, a construction lab to the northeast, some shared storage and support spaces for that. And then agriculture classroom, robotics classroom, and construction and engineering classroom to the south side of that addition. We're also continuing to consider, kind of the last point on the slide, creating access from the existing dining room to the courtyard through an entrance in the west wall of the dining space. That would be something that could be an alternate bid that we get a price for and give the board some flexibility after the hard visit. We seem to either pursue that or not. That's the floor plan in general, any questions about that? On the site then, you see again the two additions in red, the CTE to the west, the E and athletics addition to the north. There are some reconfiguration of the drive that currently is to the west of the existing CTE addition that comes and wraps around the gymnasium, creates a semi-enclosed courtyard space. There's still access into that and out of it for exiting purposes from the building. And we are also planning similar to Northfield for the larger of the two additions to be sprinkler. So we see north of the building, to the west of the tennis courts would be a small wellhouse and a large storage tank for that sprinkler system and also expanded parking in that same area, so the existing lot grows. The existing north lot grows to the west. I think we gained about 20 or so parking spaces when that expanded parking. I believe that's the last slide, if there's any, oh, I guess we do that. Yeah, so applying kind of the same materials and geometry that we had at the Northfield property, since they are twin buildings already, this continues that look. Again, we're still pretty early in that design process, and this will be developed more over time. But that shows in the foreground, the gymnasium addition, you can see kind of the separation between the two building additions then and the CTE, see kind of the north face of the CTE labs in the background. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Well, the CTE is going to have slope growth or?
We haven't finalized that yet. It has the opportunity to be either way, the lower or the southern portion of it. We're picturing being, matching the existing roof line of the existing building. So it lends itself to be flat, but it could be, could be either and probably not interfere with the existing building. But we thought that might help make the transition to the taller roofs and then ultimately the pitched roof of the fieldhouse. Sure, so the sprinkler system will need a wellhouse either way. It's possible to put the testing facility either as part of the building addition, one of the other two building additions, or to build up with that wellhouse. So the discussion so far has to be, has been to combine those into a single small structure near that water tank, but it could be located in any of those three spots. It works pretty well out there because we would have easy access to water in that area, power in that area. Anyway, there's pretty relatively easy access to a sanitary drain because they have a kind of a working lab for that testing function. So it does combine pretty well the other uses off.
The fieldhouse then is, the dimensions or the sizing is almost identical to the Northfield one there?
Correct, yes. The support spaces move a little bit around there.
I understand the idea of moving, deleting the concessions. I just didn't know if there was something, if they were having anything in that area for any activity in the fieldhouse or in the wrestling in the house for even the outside baseball tennis. That been given thought?
As has been discussed in the meetings, I think that consensus has felt like it would maybe not be used if it was built there, for just from a, maybe from a staffing, getting involved here and forcing and our staff to actually operate it. But we confirm that as well. Any other question?
The CTE building, I don't know if it was explained that the classroom would be the same level as the current classroom, but then it would be stepped up higher for the workers, for the lab.
Those areas being utilized quite a bit, I guess?
Tim can probably speak to more of the offerings out there, but they have different things that they are doing out there that seem to be pretty popular.
Yeah, we, Jordan Boyer, we've got the construction background with his hand also. I just saw a picture they shared in their newsletter. He's built stick-framed walls and they're put electrically, plumbing in and they're living and taking it. I mean, it's not a whole house, but he looked at that stuff. And so he, his class is very popular with the younger kids. Now, once you get to high school, have to start making choices and stuff, and it was getting smaller. But he also just won a grant, he attended a training which earned him a grant of $20,000. So he just purchased a new CNC machine and 3D printer and some other things. Just today, they printed their first sign, they created a sign with his name. So I think he, he's a young guy, I think it's a pretty good safe investment. As with everything, it's the person. He's building up. And so I guess the short answer is yeah, we've got some interest. The long answer is how does that fit with Hartland? You still want kids to go to the building trades there, but there's not enough seats for everything to go there. It's working, we, it's, there's still a lot more. The Hartland one is still a notch above what the kid from experience, but some places it might fit just as well. He's offering engineering, junior high kind of industrial arts class that we kind of remember. It's not quite like that, but that kind of stuff is much more computerized, pad.
So all that talent will be given consideration when you decide how to equip those areas then too?
Yeah.
Right, I, I would like to think those, in those conversations for sure. As far as what we use and not use. But I think last year, they built so many houses for the fire department. They do like a practice drill with fire and stuff. I'm speaking way out, I just saw pictures of it. And so he's pretty active with the community. So yeah, I would imagine that equipment should, as far as the size, would affect that. Of course, robotics takes up a lot of space, we know that from all of our different buildings.
Brian, thank you, or we got Wygand?
Yeah.
Neil from Wygand?
Yeah, I think I've got most of you guys, but I'm Neil of Wygand, I'm a project executive. I'm working on the Northfield project now. Seth Boyer is our project manager, who's going to be working on the Southwood projects. So we brought him along, he's been helping me out with some of the logistics and planning for the Southwood sites. And we're going to go through tonight, we just really wanted to give a preface it with, it's an SD or schematic design level tentative logistics plans, some overall milestone schedules, and then just walk through the phasing and kind of what we're planning with VCB and Dr. Coon and the team now, along with the principals, so Casey and Amber and Lina as well. So we'll start with the elementary school. So we've got two versions of the elementary school logistics. This just shows the site layout of how we would plan to kind of implement the construction space for laydown parking and how we're getting in and out. So as you can see, we've got the red space, the red rectangle, this is version one. So we would have the red rectangle as laydown, the yellow outline is the fencing. Green up in the northwest, we would have the parking of the contractors. So with this plan, everybody would be utilizing the entrances that are currently there, which we understand presents somewhat of a challenge and doesn't give us that separation that everybody likes for safety and keeping construction separate from buses and parents and staff. So this is version one. We would maintain the delivery access to the kitchen or the loading dock. And then in the south portion where we see that expanded parking, we'll get to that in the schedule piece. But really, we would try to tackle that next summer to get that done early so that there could be parking there we wouldn't have to take, or what we would have to take on the southwest there by the gate where the yellow box is showing where those cars would have to go away. You guys, you know, Southwood Elementary would have additional parking on the south. So that's version one. And in SD review and talking to Tony Baker and Casey at the elementary school, we kind of heard that you guys would like to look at separating that and potentially doing a temp access road for construction near the tree line on the west off of Say Road right there. So Dr. Coon, if you go to the next page, we'll kind of show the version two. So with this comes a little bit of cost for that temp access road, but we spoke with engineering, we think that it's going to be doable for a temp access road. So in this plan, everything relatively stays the same, but allows us to have that separation of construction and traffic and deliveries and wouldn't impede the student, staff, parents, buses that are entering on that southeast side. So really, it maintains all the parking there beside the fence near the new cafeteria expansion. In either case, we would really shoot to do that south expansion parking first next summer with our phase one and two that we'll get into. But this is the, probably the version that works best. We just are running costs estimates and seeing what the impact is to do it this way versus the version one that we have. So, and we've got, you know, a rough order of magnitude of, you know, the tune of six figures for an allowance that would be carried and it would be tracked to put that temp access road in. But it would require coal burn in the swale right off the road on the north side and then the stone road. So we would drive up and pass that lift station to the left and all of our laydown would then shift to, laydown department would shift to the outfield of the north softball. So we walked this, I walked this the other day with Mr. Baker. And this is kind of a version after talking to engineering, giving, you know, loose recommendation that would probably be acceptable from indot and DNR and all the authority side jurisdiction. It sounded like that temp road would probably be acceptable. And so we just really, as we keep going through design phases, just need to work with you guys and Casey and VCB team and nail that down and finalize a final version of the logistics that we'd like. So that's the, that's the elementary logistics, the two versions. Are there any comments, questions, thoughts on?
You're going to be able to number together that temporary?
The temporary, yes, yeah. And all the laydown? Yeah, so all of this, all of the laydown, all the consumables, the trailers, all of that will be packaged into general conditions, general requirements, Kevin. But we will, which will be visible in a line item breakout when we get to a more detailed estimate. But yeah, we'll definitely be able to identify a harder rough order magnitude for that road. Right now, just to give you guys an idea, because we had an SD budget review a couple of weeks ago. And just to give your team an idea, we would say for this version of the logistics, we would earmark probably $100,000 to $150,000 just to draw off of from an allowance to put that road in or increase that original SD general condition budget, Kevin, by six figures. So.
So that includes the relatable, right?
Includes the removal, correct. We kicked around the idea of could we chip and seal and keep it permanent to the lift station? Could we utilize that and not tear it out since we're spending the money? But not sure what that means from a, from a.
Indot, Mike.
From an indot, correct. I mean, we're very close to the creek where we cross over with the guard around the bridge. So I don't know if we, you know, we're looking into would A sell, B sell, would we have? Would we have to improve the road a certain distance? You know, that all comes with cost and, and routing approvals that. We'll get into this with scheduling, I keep saying that. But really, we want to be set up to have shovels in the ground June 1st to be able to have any, you know, to be able to have the best chance of getting the, the new cafeteria expansion complete and ready for 10 classrooms by December of 26th so that we can start renovating the rest of the space. So we'll keep numbers, we'll, we'll keep crunching the numbers, we'll keep presenting at our budget review meetings through the design phases. But this is really probably preferred version? It's just, does it work with the budget and, and is it?
Is it doable?
Okay, if you're gonna, is there a cheaper way just to make the west entrance wider?
Wider.
And then create an entrance exit just for construction and follow along that west side and?
Yeah, there, there, a thought that, a thought that we had was there's a, there's a fence right there that can be removed by the softball or, or by that west entrance. There's a fence right there, kind of an L shape that could be removed. So we might be able to, we could look at widening that and using that as, as a path and run up along the baseball. But yeah, there's, there's plenty of ideas. And we've got this over to Casey and we've got the high school over to Amber. We're, we're happy for feedback from anyone. Again, it's all, numbers are going to come into play, so we'll, we'll run the best options and let you guys kind of drive that direction.
Hey, it's been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, something you gotta trail, tear right out.
Right, I completely get it. Yeah. The safety, the separating construction, all that makes sense, but what does it worth? You know, where's the, where's the return on it? So. That's version, that's best version for elementary. I'll go into the phasing for elementary, really stick with elementary. So really, what we've shown is 10 phases. We've got the, the two critical phases or the two most important as we get towards a, a release of, of documents and bidding the job and awarding it is really the west expansion that we see for the cafeteria. So that's that olive green. That's phase one. And then phase two, but in conjunction with phase one is all the red that we see. So you can see that we've separated this out by basically six classrooms and then non-classroom program space. So admin, the restroom, the art, the media, the rise room, the kitchen, the gym. So everything non-classroom that's blocked off has to be completed in summers. So you know, when school lets out in May, June, get ready and be open by August. Those are what we've crunched into the summer months. And then all of the other phases that are kind of the classroom blocks are 55 to 65 durations. Where once that olive green first phase, which is June 1 to December 15, 26, once that's built and we have the six temp classrooms in place, we can get classrooms moved over and start going and bid each of those six classroom blocks and not make that up. So that's kind of the phasing of what we're, of what we're planning right now. Overall schedule puts us at, and, any questions on this? We can schedule ties right into the phasing, so it's going to go into that. And I don't know if you'll be able to see the schedule if we go down. But just going to talk about the bidding. We, we plan to get documents in March next year. We're going to bid in April. We'll be mobilizing by end of May. And like I said, we really, to get that done and set up for the success of the schedule of the classrooms and moving over, really need to have shovels in by June 1 to be able to get, to get all that going. I mean, the most critical piece is that cafeteria, the setup of the temp classrooms. So this is the site, this kind of just shows the, the site improvement of when that would go with phasing. So really, our idea would be phase one, summer of next year, get that green parking like we were talking about. And then the blue would go at the end of the project. We would maintain egress around the new cafeteria and the sidewalks. But really, we probably wouldn't improve that asphalt or that, that circle driver truck turnaround until the end of the project just to not compromise the, you know, asphalt and striping and all that. So that kind of shows, that kind of shows the exterior site improvement phase. Dr. Coon, if you keep going down to the schedule, this is really too much information. Too much information, but I, I kept it, I kept it expanded just to show, like, just to show when we're bidding, what our plan is for opening documents and, and awarding the project. So I kind of gave the milestones there. It's really March documents, April bids, May award, and then June 1st, late May, 5/28 start. To hold the schedule for the phasing. Overall phasing for this entire elementary is June 1 to July, so it's, it's roughly 25 months. So elementary, and again, I said this at the beginning, everything we're looking at here is flexible, tentative. It's YG's version in, in coordination and collaboration with you guys, with Barton Co. We're, we're, we're getting feedback, we're going through the design phase and whatever. Running the cost estimates, so whatever ends up being the final version, we'll have all of those parties, you know, takes involved and incorporated. Questions on elementary? Before I let Seth take over some of these high school points, I'll give a little preamble of the high school.
I was just going to add, I think that duration, once you see that, speaks a little bit to the value of separating that traffic. Because you're going to deal with this for two years, a couple winters.
It, it's a long, yeah, it's a long project. We just came off of a similar project. Not as, I mean, elementary's tough. It's a tight site, there, there's quite a bit of phases, it's, it's the entire school, all the classrooms. But we just came off of project Seth was the project manager. And we feel confident in the duration we've set for six classroom turnover. It was very similar work to what we did. So we've looked at tightening that schedule up. I, I just, with all the work we have, especially the summer work of what we have to squeeze in from admin, the gym, the new robotics, the, the art, the media, all of that, I, I think it's a, it's doable. It's a, it's going to take that long. And like, like Brian's saying, it's, you know, it's going to be, elementary's going to live with that for two years. So maybe that does weigh in, I appreciate you saying that, Brian.
I have a concern, maybe it's not important, but you're, you're on such a tight timeline there from when the bid packages go out to when you say, Neil, you want shovel on the ground?
Right.
Is that going to cause any disruption in the bidding?
It shouldn't, no. We've got a plan for, so this is getting into the weeds, Kevin, but it won't cause any disruption with bidding. We've got a pretty good plan and we'll get the notices out to the parties that, that, you know, we'll put bulletins out and save the dates. So I think we'll be okay from a bidding standpoint. What's going to be important is being able to procure, you know, the MVP equipment for the cafeteria expansion to support that, the admin space to support that. So cafeteria is getting an area, you know, admin space is getting an RTU. We've got new panel boards for electrical, we've got 800 amp switch here. So we've been talking to Barton Co, we've got some back and forth. And through this planning, we'll determine if it makes sense to do an early, an early equipment package and get that stuff coming to, to hold those dates for, for construction. But from a bidding standpoint now, I don't see, I don't see an issue with the things that we do with our pre-con department and getting those saved the dates out. Well, I think we'll have good participation and I think we'll be able to turn our contracts and put. High school also has two versions because we, we made an original version one logistics and phasing. And we have a version two. So originally at RFP response, when we turned in our, our response to the RFP, we were running under the impression that we would have no phasing, it would be a single project, we would do all of this at once. Throughout the pre-con meetings and Barton Co's meetings with Amber and the school and Dr. Coon, you guys, it, it, it would benefit to keep the existing CTE space operational and functional while we build the west CTE expansion. And once that's done and, and everybody's moved into the west CTE expansion right there off the existing building, we could then take over and do the north gym expansion. So we've got two versions, one showing single, single during it all at once. And then we've got versions that show, you know, phase one and phase two. Again, we're running the cost with that. If it's split into phasing, it adds about six months to the duration of the project, which comes along with the cost for general conditions, general requirements, mobilizations. There's some other things like splitting up into phasing has now presented us with the challenge of bidding this job as well in April. Staggered from the elementary, which will go first, but maybe lagged by two weeks or so. Those subs or those bid packages that bid would have to hold phase two material quotes and all of that until, for about a year. And so that's pretty unprecedented. We get some kickback when we ask them to hold stuff for 90 days. So that'll be a challenge we'll need to work through. And, and there's no telling what the markup could be on holding material through, you know, through suppliers for, for a year. There's mobilization impact, there's, there's, like I said, general conditions, general requirements. So by doing it all in one, it's quicker and less expensive. But you lose your current CTE space that you have to the north where the gym's going to go. If you split it up, it's a little more costly, it's going to take a little longer and, but you can maintain that program while we do the west CTE. So with that, I'll let Seth kind of walk through the logistics, the high level logistics and, and schedule. And we'll open it up for questions.
Well, Neil's preamble pretty much covered most of it. Dr. Coon, if you go back up to the first one.
That's one more.
This is original, that's perfect. So original, this would be both buildings, CTE on the west, gym is the, on the north, go at the same time. And with this, we'll, I'll just, I'll touch on a couple of things. Fencing perimeter, construction area, site access and laydown. And then some of the challenges with, with all this. So fencing, I'll stand up here so I can just point to it. So fencing going around the entirety of this space, this would all be construction area. Three gates are three access points and then all, all traffic and, and access back into, from a staffing standpoint, busing standpoint would all come off of state road 1.4. This is again, proposal, this is why, you know, YG's first, first blush at, you know, if this was our best case, but we all have some understanding, this is, this is very impactful for the school over a duration of 20 month period. So again, this would be holding 20 months, starting, starting next, maybe June. So again, access, this would maintain the existing student parent pickup drop off. But again, all of it coming off the state road to 1.4, buses only. This is a, this is a suggestion and this is an idea. Expanding some drive coming with buses just in here. But then again, moving around in the, on the north parking lot by the tennis courts and coming back out to the south on 1.4. All construction access will be, it's two gates. And really, this third gate would just be kind of more of an emergent scenario. So laydown in red, contractor parking in light blue here. What you see in dark blue would be approximately a 40 foot perimeter around the building. So that, kind of a, a phrase that we utilize at, at YG is a, an organized site, is a safe site, is a clean site. So, so all of that containment is in hand, it's also an efficient site. So that's, that's the, the blue temporary stone construction area for a little traffic and for staging as, as, as work can go in place. Another thing that you'll notice is to the north, so there's a proposed stormwater retention area here in this, in this dotted area in green. And just around that would be some expanded laydown. Mostly that would be utilized with vision raising. So again, all construction, traffic would be separated from, from, from staff and students. But it'd be, it's disruptive, it's disruptive to the site and to students and staff. So any questions on that, on that first, I guess, both projects going at once?
You quickly mentioned stormwater up there by this, whatever, because of the lot being increased then?
Yeah.
What, what dictates that?
Yeah, maybe Brian, you can speak to that.
Underwater storm retention on that north side of the road, what are, where, where are we gathering? Or is it from that added impervious that goes to CTE and that's going to park?
Yeah, any conversion of a lawn area to either a roof or, or two more pavement will trigger expanding your stormwater capacity? We, the last time I, I got an update from the engineers, we, we are not totally sure yet what requirements they're going to have because I think they have new, the requirements are new since the last time the site was improved. So they're still working with accounting on what the drainage requirements will be. So we need to finalize that, but that's a, an estimate for, for time being. But it, it occurs anytime you increase the, what they call impervious surface area.
Well, that was my question. You know, I'm always concerned about the lack of real estate there that we have to work with in the future. I, I realize the retention area could be moved. But, you know, that's a traffic area back and forth for practices, all the football crosses.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get more detail. There's usually options on where those can go or whether they go on the surface or, or below ground. That's something we will, we'll continue to kind of monitor and develop, how much capacity we need based on county requirements. But we can, we can update the group on that.
Ian, Kevin, I, we hear, we, we've heard you guys loud and clear about the practice football ban, that area to the north of the road. We always are going to have that fire tank, suppression tank and the pump house that we're going to have to deal with. But if that intention went away, we probably could slim up that laydown if it all worked together and just stick to the southwest of that, you know, where you see the larger laydown and, and construction trailer area. You're really probably not going to, you're not going to love, football is not going to love this next version if we split, if we split it up just to give you a formal warning here.
I, I guess I will now, or just to reiterate, that, that the access drive, maybe I should remain a little bit more clear here, but the access drive would be like just construction only, that's what I'm getting at. All right, so phase one, so this would be demolition of, I'm sorry, not demolition of CTE, the saving of demolition of CTE. So maintaining CTE program and the current facility until the new CTE is built. And so it would be phase one. So it would be widening management trailers and set up down in the south area. Very similar logistics kind of with this laydown, just expanding a little bit. However, this would potentially give opportunity for bussying and brow and parent pickup drop off to be able to get that tank off of Cataro 50 and, and also on the sticker of 1.4. So gives some more opportunities for flexibility with traffic control. YG and subcontractor traffic control would really mostly be limited just at this point, phase one to gate one down in the south laydown with, with maybe an opportunity to get in on, on gate two for certain traffic as that goes in.
So if split up, phase one, which would be May, June 26th to February, March 27th, you would maintain that drive, there wouldn't be an impact. There, there'd be some impact, but it would maintain and be open for at least that first duration or that first duration of the project. And then as we would move, as we would turn that over and move into phase two, pre-engineered metal building, the gym addition, which would be phase two, you'll, you'll see it on the next slide, the impact to the north. Any questions on this?
Yeah, so phase two is essentially the relocation of that, that laydown, we're going to the entirety of the doors. Space, all the main practice area. It's a pretty impactful in that regard. Our, our, our goal would be to maintain, someone will like.
Our, our, our goal would be to maintain some level of accessibility to the, a far right west bay for deliveries and access. Our idea was that, that would be about seven construction parameters, but we still would maintain approximately, like I said earlier, about a forty foot perimeter around the building for the new gymnasium. And so that leaves just a real tight space for emergency dress out the north of the CTE when it's in operation as, as this is all, as the new gymnasium is being built. And then at this point, approximately February, March of twenty-seven would be when all the, the traffic would be constructed at that point and then the traffic through this north drive and off the state road one twenty-four. And then at that point, we could be relocating management trailers and such to the proposed parking area. Questions, comments on, on that? So as a, as a whole. Is there a question? Sorry, Dr. Coon. Yeah. Yeah, so as a whole, both, both demolition, both buildings at one time, twenty months. Separated out in the, in the, into the phase one and two as described, culture and tools at this point.
I know there's a lot of hurdles to jump, but is it possible to move construction of the west building up a couple of months where it was open by its school year and you'd still kind of be all phase one?
Yeah, so there, there's, there's some challenges that we run and we've, we understand from facilities that there's the, the switch gear, boiler, the chiller, all of these to be procured and also placed before that CTE, the, the new building comes in, into play or opens up. So some of that equipment, we're estimating the switch gear for the electricals approximately sixty month lead time, or sixty week lead time over a year. So it would, at, at minimum, we would have a procurement package.
There's a couple of, so, so the, the early procurement, getting the mechanical and electrical systems ordered, delivered and installed is one challenge. The, the, the second one is we've gotta let Barton Co get through the design phase. And so that would really pull them up in the design to be able to get that released to us earlier, bid it earlier. And I just, with the time it takes to, to develop construction documents and get it all out to bid, it's, I'm not saying it can't be done. It's just, it takes a lot of routing and permitting and getting drawings done and getting state approvals and it, it's challenging. That's a great, yeah, definitely. If we had the scheduled time to finish the drawings and get the routing complete, yeah, that's a great, that's a great option. But I just, I, I don't, I don't think we're at that, I don't think we're there past it.
One of the concerns I have about doing it in two phases is that we're gonna absorb almost with certainty some of that escalation cost. Because they're holding this, as you mentioned prior, they're holding these contracts. If I were to receive that electrical, well, even then, it'd be an unknown because you wouldn't be bidding one. Both phases split or not split, so you're, there's no comparison.
Right.
Wouldn't know. To have them, we'll never be told.
Correct. And like Seth mentioned, it's twenty months if done, and single phase is it's twenty, more like twenty-six, there's general conditions, there's general requirements, there's escalation clause, there's, there's a lot that goes, there's, there's remobilization and shifting around logistics and setups for laydown. There's, there's quite a, there's quite a hefty cost that comes along with splitting it. But it allows the programs, you know, it's against, what is it, you know, get away and it allows that program to stay open. I don't know if there would be, there, there's gonna be further conversations, but is there potential for temporary trailer classroom setups? And I know that doesn't do much from a lab standpoint, but could that be done somewhere? I mean, is part of it a option for the students that are in the current one now? I don't know if there's capacity or if that works with you guys' programming and your curriculum. But there's definitely, there's definitely, along with the, along with the cost and the schedule impact, there's definitely those kinds of discussions that need to be had, so.
I mean, now also whether that shifts the main scenario piece more into cold weather winter.
Right.
Too, you'd be absorbing some of that.
Winter conditions.
Winter conditions.
There, there, there's, there's. It's not ideal from a schedule to finish or complete, but you know, phase one west CTE and be done in, you know, February, March, that's not a great time of the school year program to be switching and coming along more with that and then demoing. You'll like, you know, that poses an issue, but you know, from a construction and a duration standpoint, it takes what it takes. And like, we feel comfortable that we can get done with the west CTE by that timeframe. It just doesn't work perfect into a school's semester curriculum. So there's, there's plenty of challenges that we're talking through. And Kevin, you're spot on with winter conditions, like at what time of year are we gonna be digging footings and foundations? At what time are we gonna be putting both bearing masonry up? Is that a cost that comes along with tenting and and heating and all those winter condition type items?
Well, we appreciate you guys giving us a first look at, at some thoughts here to the board and and community. We, we understand with any type of construction, there's always gonna be disruptions and we appreciate what you guys have done and working with us on the north field projects. You guys are very professional and make sure that, you know, school comes first when it comes to everything. So we've always appreciated that. But we do know that there'll be challenges because this is a different, different project than what we were doing on the north side when it comes to what needs to be done with some of the ratings on the south end, so. Any final questions for these gentlemen? Comments?
We appreciate it, thanks for letting us share.
Thanks, guys.
If there are any questions, I mean, shoot them over, we, we'd be happy to sit again and walk through. For you guys kind of holed up and come up with, I, I guess there's, there's a couple actions. We'll, as we get more into, as we get more into the design phase with DE and and moving forward even closer to the benchmark, we really do need to remember for budget alignment. So really determining the phasing is a big one. And I know that's gonna come along with all this, well, all the costs for it, so we're working on it.
All right, thank you. We'll end the work session and give us a, for those watching, we'll give us a few minutes to get set up for our board meeting.